Hey, hey. Good to see you.
Hi, Betsy. Hi, Camila. Hey, Jason.
We'll just give Terry a couple more seconds to get here.
Oh, I think Terry went into the wrong session.
Okay.
Natalia. I'll email him.
Katie, while we're waiting, did you want to take the public comment before you guys go into closed session?
Well, we, it looks like we might have to do a little reshuffling of the agenda, so let's deal with that first and then see where we fall.
Okay.
So, yeah, just, let's see how it rolls.
I just spoke to him. He's gonna come into the right room.
Okay, perfect. Too many Zooms. Too many Zooms. Oh, God. All right. There we go.
All right. Sorry, everybody.
No problem. All right, we've got everybody. So I am gonna call this meeting to order at 5:05 PM. And just real quick, guys, we've got something to think about here at the top. So Paul is with us from Negro and Negro to do the audit report, but they've got a hard out at 6:30. Is that right, Paul?
Sorry, let me get my mic on here. Our schedule is a 6 o'clock Zoom, so.
Okay, got it. So.
Yeah, if there's a quick five that I could do before, that'd be great, so.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is do our roll call and then adapt the agenda and move that special presentation to before the closed session. And then adjourn into closed session and pick up with the rest of the agenda from there. So unless there are any major objections to that, that means we would need a motion, or well, let's, let's just, let's just start. So we'll start with a roll call. Trustee Andrews. Sorry, we gotta do, we gotta do the, yeah, I know.
I'm here.
Trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Khan.
Here.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
All right, very good. So that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to move item 4C, the special presentation to before closed session, which means we'd resume with 3D, which is public comment on non-agenda items after closed session. I understand we do have a public comment, and so if Natalia, that person would like to go now, that's great. If they'd like to go after closed session, that's fine, too. I just, you know, I don't want somebody to have to wait around for however long that'll be if they, if they would prefer not to. So if I could hear a motion, please, to reorder the agenda by moving the special presentation to before closed session. I don't know why I can't hear you. Camila, that was weird.
She's muted.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All good. Everyone? Okay. I moved to reorder the agenda. Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second, but then I have a question.
Okay. Discussion, please.
I just, I'm sure this is the case, but I just want to confirm that we've gotten no requests for public comment to the special presentation. In other words, someone who would be, who would miss this because it's on the agenda for later, who would have spoken to it?
That's a good question. Not that I'm aware of. I believe the public comment we have, Natalia, is for a non-agendized item. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and I have the person here when you guys are ready.
Okay. That being the case, you know, we've been pretty relaxed about doing public comment in any order, so I would be perfect. If somebody does have a public comment, certainly we can, we can always do it a little bit later in the agenda if they were under the impression that we were stuck to the original agenda format, which is a reasonable one. Any other questions or discussions? Okay, hearing that, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Khan.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Hi.
Perfect. Thank you. And I vote I as well. So that, that means we will reorder the agenda to move the special presentation to before closed session. I am gonna ask the person who was gonna make a public comment to wait, just because I feel like we did tell people to join us at 6:00 PM last time we met, and in the interest of having potentially more folks hear that public comment, I think it might be fairer to let it sit where it was originally gonna sit. Natalia, can you confirm that that's okay with that individual? Okay. That being the case, I'd ask for a motion to go ahead and adapt the agenda with that one amendment. So we made, we moved to reorder it, and now we have to adopt it, so.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you so much. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Perfect. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as amended. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing that, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Khan.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Hi.
That's an I vote for me as well. Perfect. Thank you so much. So that being the case, we will now proceed to item 4C, our special presentation.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Paul K. Mark, the audit partner from Negro and Negro, coming to you from my house this evening. Natalia, will you be able to bring up the, the share of a screen for the report?
I actually do not have the report.
Part of the agenda package?
Give me one second.
Okay. Could you turn to at the bottom page 14 on the report, please? Thank you. There you go. Is everybody able to see this right now?
Pretty good.
We're good. Okay, great. All right, I'm gonna make this just, these all see that a little bit bigger there and stuff, so. Right now, this is the fund balance. So this is on a cash basis. This is really what we're looking at here, as it's really compared more to your budget overall for the organization, about how the cash came in and cash went out throughout the year during fiscal year 2020, as of June 30 of 2020. And this really more than looking at the overall, the other financial statements that are presented in here, which are on a full accrual basis. You have your capital assets, you have depreciation expense, you have other long-term liabilities that are on there, and there amortization over a period of time. You've got pension, you've got other post-employment benefits. This right here, this report out of all of them in there, really stands to really understand the organization and what you went through during fiscal year 2020. So as we look at this overall, property taxes, we had a nice increase in there, about $140,000 overall for the fiscal period. The redevelopment increment, now what we separate out for this is, is when the governor decided to abandon the redevelopment aspect of cities in years ago, there was, there's a component that you're receiving right now, which we call one-time cash. And this one-time cash will eventually phase out, okay, over a period of time, that it won't be coming in. So we separate that out as an aspect overall of your property tax money. Why do we do that? Well, look at the situation we are in right now with COVID, okay? Kind of the same type of situation the state might find its budgetary self in a few years back, around 2010, maybe a decade ago, when they decided to do a take of property taxes to fund their budget overall. So if we were to include that other 47,000 there as part of your overall 2.7 million in reporting to the state in your annual state controllers report, when the state decides to come in and say, "We need 70% of your property taxes," they can do that. That portion would be if we add those together, you add those two increments together, and then you say, "Let's take 70% of that." Well, they're really taking 80% of your potential increment. Just how it happens. So we separate out the one-time money, which is called the redevelopment increment, out of that to make sure that in the future, because they go back, they always look back for an aspect for a take. At one point in time, if it comes to be, they decide to do a take, they're taking off the 2.7, which is your, your annual secured and unsecured portion this year, plus supplemental taxes, not part of your special, your one-time money from the redevelopment exit by the governor a few years ago. So that's that aspect. Your special assessments overall, coming in for the library tax that's there. Charges for services, bingo. This is COVID right here. We're going through the year, we're going through the year, we've got eight months in of the fiscal period, boom, COVID hits, you shut down. There's your services internally that you had to shut your services down there. You weren't able to complete that out. Maybe it would've been 130, $140,000 this year from your charges for service. So specifically, that COVID aspect right there relates the dollars to what happened. Operating grants and contributions, those are things that are being awarded to you throughout the year, money coming in. Your investment earnings, the investment rate did go down by the end of the year where it was from the period before, so we would anticipate that being a reduction, and of course, overall, that was. Most of this money is generated by the County of Los Angeles pool, where you're holding your funds, and the rates did go down from a good, like, 2.7%. You know, we went to zero interest rates due to COVID by June 30 of 2020, so a large decline there. And then other revenues that would sprinkle in, other miscellaneous revenues during the year, though. So overall, but overall, 3.915 million versus 3.8 million there overall. So a nice jump of about $110,000 between the two periods there in pure cash flows in during the period. Cash flows out. I commend you from keeping your staff on during the COVID aspect overall. And the process there, you can see that you've maintained salary steady. Probably lost a few part-timers there, which you didn't need during the period of time of COVID, but overall, very good. Thank you for keeping your staff on during the COVID period. Employee benefits there, same numbers stay about the same. We're looking at the same staff levels between the two periods there overall. Moving down, pure and simple, COVID, materials and supplies. Those expected things that you were expecting to do during your springtime, moving on to your youth focus more towards the summer, those got shot down. Those expenses were not being utilized. Adding to your overall bottom line there, from a negative 48,000 of using into your reserves, spending a little bit on $50,000 on some capital upgrades there within the, within the district, boom, adding 325,000 in pure cash to your bottom line, to your reserves for the next period. Hoping we'll get out of COVID, we'll be able to utilize these funds as your reserves moving forward. So this really, really, looking at it this way, and looking at the anticipations, the numbers really speak to how the organization did through that fiscal period and how you're moving forward out of that. So any real questions on this or some other of the long-term liabilities? But this really speaks to the organization and how it did, how it made it through those four months of COVID at the end of the year and where you stand at the end of the fiscal period. So good job and good addition to your bottom line.
Paul, can I just? That's a weird echo. I just wanted to ask, because this question comes up in every discussion related to finances with the ALD. Of that 3.6 million and a little bit extra, how much of that are we required to keep in reserves by law? I think it's about six months of operating. Is that correct?
Well, it's usually about, you really need to keep about nine months. Okay, if you look at it in pure reserves, because if we look over here to your property tax number, 2.7 million, okay? And your expenditures are 3.5 million overall, all right? So remember, from July 31st, the start of 2020, the start of your fiscal period, you're really not getting any money from that property tax increment or that special assessment increment, and that is about $3.5 million, and those two right there. So half of that would be 1.8 million, I would say. That 1.8 million needs to carry you through to Christmas, because the first property tax, the real, property taxes are due on December the 10th. The money then gets worked with the County of Los Angeles. It's finally given to you about Christmas time. So you've got six months, what we call, that's our six-month dry yield period. And if you utilize the dry yield period, you're cash poor during that period of time, because that bulk of your operating revenues from property taxes and the special assessment, you don't get that money. You're gonna get a sprinkling. You're gonna get a couple hundred, maybe 100,000 or something. That's not gonna cover payroll for six months. That money is not gonna come in, so that reserve is needed 100%. And if you look at that reserve to your overall expenditures, that's one year. That's one, you have one year of reserves on hand based on last year's expenditures overall, kind of the average between the two years there, if a full service year looking into consideration. Every dime of that is needed. Every dime is that, because what if you have an emergency? Not only do you need your six months' reserve, but you need another six months in case of emergencies happen or something like that. What if we have a devastating earthquake? Your ability to get to cash is very important. We look at these reserves, don't look at these reserves as operations. If you do, look at 50% of that, 1.8 million, as operating reserves, 50% of that is capital replacement reserves that you're building for the future, the future sustainability of this organization, this library.
I have a question, Paul.
Yes.
And hi, by the way. Nice to see you. It's been a while.
Good to see you, Terry.
We had a budget meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was pretty straightforward, because we were basically looking at the auditors report. We weren't making any changes in our numerical numbers for the rest of the year. But one thing that I had a hard time with was these post-employment benefits. Appeared to be like a variation of what we were spending for that in the last year, so I picked that up in your, in your report. But realize, I don't really understand it probably as well as I should. I might be speaking for others on the, on the board about how those different discount variations work. In footnote number six, there's a long explanation about different types of discounting and so on that changes year to year, and that has an impact on that line that, that we have our liability column. So can you give us like a two-minute primer on how that whole thing works?
Yeah, I mean, well, for the first part, you do have some money with CalPERS in their, in their fund called the SERPT fund, okay? And it's basically, it's kind of a bank account that you're using there, but you can reimburse yourselves in future periods. And it really works when investment rates, fixed income investment rates are higher, okay? Because when you're, when the investment return kicks on, that lowers your liability overall, because you're earning money on your money. Right now, it's really hard, because we're not earning any money on any money right now with interest rates that way they are. But you've placed some money over there into that fund. It's irrevocable fund. It's not for operations, it's not for anything else. It's for to pay down those healthcare benefits. And the money, because we're saddled with, as a governmental agency, if you can remember back, Terry, to 1994, the Citron debacle in Orange County, when Orange County declared bankruptcy. Right after that, immediately, the California Legislature put into effect into the government code specifics on how governmental organizations in the state of California can invest, invest their money. We call it the Citron Code. And they basically tied your hands with basically CDs and some fixed earning, you know, various, you know, liquidity, safety, return, kind of in that level. And to that point, it's really hard to earn money. But they opened up these irrevocable trusts, where you can then push money out to pay for future benefits. And by doing that, that doesn't fall under the Citron governmental code, because it's in an irrevocable fund. They can earn 6%, 7%, 8%, 9% by playing the market and everything like that. And that's what that money is for. It's there to churn and burn and raise that amount overall. That's why you're not seeing where that interest goes. The interest stays in that pool, and it helps, because you have, you have two components. Here's my calculation of my OPEB liability. Here's my bank with CalPERS. One minus the other gives you the OPEB liability at a present value, okay? But more to understanding of that is, right now, you can look at it, it's not like, it's hard to look at, even CalPERS, the pension liability is hard to look at. It's not a mortgage. It's, it's gonna go up. It has so many parameters and so many things every year to bounce up and down, both of those, based on the market, how's the interest rates going, how many, how many retirees do we have? How many have matured? Matured is they've passed on. We're not paying for them anymore. How do we, as a, look at it from an actuary point of view? The bigger thing for you is to look at from an organization is kind of not gonna look at that, because I can't really throw money at it unless I want to pay it off, and that's millions of dollars. The big thing is, is we're into this, what is my annual cost of what I'm paying for? And yours is about, runs about $50,000, $55,000 a year. And that's your annual cash out to pay for benefits for those who are retired that you're paying for right now. That is really, really what should be focused on. We get lost in the size of that liability and all the discounts and everything, and that's, I've spent 400 or more hours away from my family trying to understand to be an actuary, and I don't still get it. So I let the professionals do what they do. They calculate something that you look at it and go, "How big is that number?" If that number just likes, "Oh, my God, we'll never afford it." Here's the keys to the district. Bye-bye. That's where you want to walk away. They want to put it in a present value amount so that you can kind of look at it and kind of, "Does it smell okay? Is it 10 million? Is it 20 million? Did we give the, did we give the farm away? If we can, if you can swallow the amount and say that's something that's gonna be paid over a lifetime, then that's fine. It's three, four generations worth of, worth of an amount there, but really focus on what's your true cash out. And I think it's about 55,000 per year.
Because we've got, we've got a budget at $60,000.
Exactly. Yeah, you're right there on your budgeted number. That's, even with CalPERS, what's my contribution? What is my fixed contribution? What's my payroll contribution to CalPERS? That's all you need to worry. That's like your mortgage payment for the year, period. Anything other than that, it's smoke and mirrors. I can't, I can't express any other way of it is. It's a number, but it's a smell test. You know, when we did it over, the biggest one is when we first did it for the city of Pomona back in 1999 years ago, we gave them their liability. Their liability was, if you work for us past your probationary period, we'll give you benefits for life. You work one year, you quit after your probationary period. You could go to work for McDonald's, and when you reach retirement age, we will pay for your healthcare. That's how it was written. Yes, exactly. Jason, I see your frustration there. And that's why these people, when you first did that calculation, it was, we presented it to the city council. It was $150 million. The mayor and another city council member stood up and go, "Here's the keys to the city. Bye-bye. I'm gone. I don't want to be, have any part of this. We gave away the farm." That's what it's there for, and to enable you to give a smell test and look at it and go, "Did we give the farm away or not?" That's, that's the only explanation, after years of doing this, that I could really, really say that I, the only thing that I can explain what those liabilities are, because they're not like a mortgage. You can throw money at it, and the market will go south tomorrow, and you'll have to pay more next year anyway. It doesn't make sense. But that's, we have to, we let the actuaries put together their number. We confirm what your bank is with CalPERS that you've made these contributions to. That's your ins and outs and everything. Here's the bank. We want to reconcile that number. Same thing with OPEB. We want to reconcile your bank. We take this minus this, gives you that. Only thing that I can do. But really, focus on if you can afford your cash out budgeted amount per year, you're fine as an organization.
Okay, good. Yeah. It was very confusing. It was confusing to everybody, so I'm okay with that.
I, I will be the first person, I'm still confused, and I've been doing this for years, and I've spent way too much time away from my family trying to understand it as well. trying to understand it as well. And I'm not an actuary and I just like, does, I'm here to put the parts into, into perspective, into place and do what I have to do for financial reporting for you to make sure that it's there. But other than that, I can't tell you, yeah, you need to drop $500,000 into that every, every few years and watch it go down. I don't think it'll make any difference. If you just make your annual payments, you'll be fine. Cause that's all you've been asked to do by CalPERS.
Right, thank you for that.
Any other questions? I think this really sums up how well you guys did last year. And it's good to see that addition to the bottom line there. And congratulations moving forward with some new facilities, I believe, so.
I'll let, I'll let, go ahead, Betsy.
Your microphone, Betsy.
Thank you, sorry. I just, I had noticed back on page eight of your report.
Uh huh. We can move back to page eight there?
Yeah, it just had a little, a little note below the numbers that said increase of operations primarily due to an increase in employee benefit costs.
Okay, so yes, so when we look at that, we're looking on it from a full accrual perspective. Okay. And your liabilities, full accrual, not cash basis. Cause I report on a full accrual basis, okay? I get back to cash so we can look at from a budget perspective. But on a full accrual basis, yes, with market going down, your rates are going to, your, your pension long and your OPEB long-term liabilities are going to go up. Okay. That's full accrual speak, not cash speak. Okay. I have to report it, I have to report that because your liabilities did go up when they recalculated from an actuary perspective because rates were falling down and the actuaries anticipated that. With that anticipation, things, your liabilities overall ballooned. But again, like I said, don't look at those, okay? But then, you know, when you do something on your balance sheet where your liabilities go up, it has a counter effect to the expense on your profit and loss. Okay, so when we look at it, if you can scroll up there, let's scroll up to the full accrual. Couple more pages. Right there, right there, okay? We show on cash basis, $325,000. This page right here, $25,000, okay? Look on it from a checkbook cash basis. Uh, like I said, that's more important. This has non-cash numbers in there. It has depreciation. It has OPEB adjustment. It has pensions adjustment. Those are detailed on the next couple of pages through the reconciliation. Don't pay any attention to those, okay? With, this is reporting full accrual. You can see that bottom line addition to reserves, $25,000 positive. Yay. But the 325 is the cash number. That's what you want to focus on.
Thank you.
Jason, I think you had something?
Yeah, Paul, so if we include the redevelopment funds, I think you said that it's best to budget those as one time. We're basically looking at from 2019 to 20, about $170,000 increase in, in our revenue if we include the three different pieces of tax revenue that we get.
Yeah.
All right. Um, I, I mean, I think, I think it's, it's perfect timing for, for us to see that here um, in our first meeting since the election. Um, just because, you know, there's, and even prior to measure Z, there's always been some discussion in the community, you know, look, property taxes are, you know, you're going to go up every year. Your budget's going to go up every year, like you should be fine. Why do we have to change anything? And I think th- these numbers show perfectly clear why we needed to go forward with measure Z. Um, and you know, I, and I think it's also safe to assume that there is no way that what's been happening at Altadena Real Estate in the last 12 months can possibly continue. I mean, it's been absolutely outrageous and so, um.
There's gonna, there's gonna come a point where it's, it's going to stop. You know, it's just like back in 2008. I don't see the mortgage market going down, but I say, you know, overall from an organization, there's going to be a point that, you know, you're not going to be the hottest property on the block. And some, and remember, there is a lot of, of an, of an older demographic in Altadena. Maybe these homes have been held for many, many years by a family. And like, for example, my mother is 80, bless her heart. She's been living in the same house since 1969. If she were to sell it today, she has a million dollar view. Um, she could sell the home for a million dollars. Her tax base is based on $45,000 when she bought the five bedroom, one story ranch house. And she pays $800 with all the additions a year in, in property tax. So when she sells that and it gets, finally, when she passes on, sells, she won't leave till she dies. I'm not telling you. When she sells that property, that will then be reevaluated to a million dollars or more. And that piece of property will start paying property taxes at today's levels. But because of Prop 13, it's still holding it back at that ability to let people who've been in homes for generations, um, be able to afford it. Okay, over a period of time. You're like a landlord, you're house rich, but cash poor. Um, I mean, she gets social security. They, they saved up to be able to buy and pay off a house at $45,000. There are a lot of those homes in Altadena and a lot of, and the cities in Los Angeles County out there that one day those homes will be sold and it will be reassessed at the new level. So we've seen a lot of that with some people retiring, getting out of Dodge, going to live either in the desert or, or another state or something. And those homes are being reassessed at that point in time. And there's a lot of that going on right now. I've seen there's, what'd they say, 650,000 people left California last year. Um, and the, so there's been a lot of increases in property taxes because they've been reassessed at today's value. So maybe we'll see more of that coming. Those numbers may hit about 3 million, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, about over 2 million in property tax money, pure property tax money in a year or two. Um, but it's going to catch up, so. But if the older population does move out, then those homes will be reassessed, so.
Thank you. Paul, anything else you'd like to walk us through or any other questions?
And but I won't want to touch, but Jason, I think what you were trying to get at is if you wanted to go through and move forward with a new facility or the upgrades that you need for your facility, it can't be halved by just this, by operations alone. Okay. It, you won't be able to afford it. You need something else that's been approved to move forward with that for those funds.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then I think, Paul, I think we're good. Thank you so much for walking us through everything and a thorough job as always.
Thank you. Uh, we wish you all a warm and safe and happy Thanksgiving with you and yours. And until next year.
Same to you. Thanks so much, Paul. All right, so with that, we will now adjourn to our closed session um, for the purpose of our annual performance evaluation for the district director. And we will resume here in this Zoom session afterwards. So I think all of the trustees, you should have an email with the closed session link. So we'll adjourn here, we'll jump onto the other Zoom for the closed session and then we'll come back to this session afterwards. So with that, I will adjourn us into closed session at 5:39 PM. I'll see you on the other link.
Bye. Hey. Hey guys. Are you there Natalia?
Yes, I am.
Okay, they're taking a five minute break and should be jumping in around 6:50.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hmm?
We're still live on YouTube.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Alright, sorry about that. Of course, I had to restart the whole operation. Okay. We all good? Alright, perfect. Then I am going to bring us back out of closed session into open session at 6:55 PM. So, reportable action from closed session, we had our annual evaluation with District Director Mee Winslow. Happy to report a very positive evaluation and a very constructive conversation surrounding a series of goals for the upcoming 12 months. So, thank you to our District Director and thank you to all of the trustees for their very helpful comments and insights and recommendations moving forward. So with that, we come to item 3D, which is public comment on non-agenda items, and I believe we have somebody standing by who'd like to make a comment. Okay, sounds good. Okay?
Good evening and thank you so much for your time, members of the Board of Directors. I'll just take a minute, I just wanted to check in. My name is Joe Crowley, my wife Kimberly, and our 15-year-old son Will. We live on Mar Vista Avenue in Altadena, just around the corner from where the Mariposa Library is. We are actually celebrating our 10-year anniversary in this week, in living in this home. We didn't plan it this time, when we moved out to Dina and into the district, but we are currently a socially-distanced facility for two home offices and a ninth-grade classroom at St. Francis High School. So, this is just how things unfold, as you don't anticipate them. Over the last decade, the three of us in our household have relied extensively on the both branches of the district's library facilities for study space, books, videos, and period obstacles. In fact, just a couple of years ago, in 2018, I spent, I had a licensing exam for my industry that was pretty important for me to pass, and I spent dozens of hours up at the library. And all of that combined, and I thankfully passed. So it was a great experience. The reason I'm coming and calling in tonight is to have one big congratulations on getting to the approval for an excess of the two-thirds threshold through Measure Z for the special tax. We look forward to, as a family, we look forward to accessing the libraries and attending improvements as soon as possible. Furthermore, in addition to being a district resident and taxpayer who enthusiastically supports and supported Measure Z, I am a municipal finance professional. I work at a company called Ziglar, where municipal bonds are ready for. We focus on special tax-type credits across the country. And I specialize in structuring, marketing, distributing tax-exempt municipal bonds, such that the district will be planning to issue here in the near future. I've been doing this for 20-plus years, I'm a Southern California resident. This is what I do for my profession. And it's a good profession, and there's an opportunity to achieve for the district the lowest interest cost, interest rates possible, and that's what I want to just introduce myself tonight. And just to that point, just wanted to inform the district, your Executive Director, your Board of Directors, the combination of the district's credit features, given its built-out real estate characteristics, how special taxes can be apportioned, and the current market interest rate environment fundamentals, which are extremely low, historically low, are very attractive for financing of this nature. I would definitely anticipate the district being in the best, strong investment grade credits, given all those combinations of factors, and just wanted to share those, my professional observations to you with that regard, with you tonight. So finally, as the board considers its financing options and opportunities moving forward, I look forward to following up with you, speaking as a taxpayer, a frequent library user, and a municipal bond professional. So thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley, so much for your comment, and thank you for your patience as well in speaking to us. I imagine that we have a number of other folks who are joining us now that we're out of closed session, so I hope that they had the opportunity to hear your comment as well, and we certainly appreciate your time. With that, we will come to our consent calendar. So the consent calendar, as you have it in your board package, begins on page three. So as is our usual practice, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, and then we'll have an opportunity to discuss any items that you'd like to highlight or comment on within it. So if I could hear a motion to approve the consent calendar, please.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. So at this point, I'd open up the floor for any observations, comments, or questions on items within the consent calendar that's from pages three to 14 of your package.
I'll just jump in real quick. And, you know, there's been a lot of chatter online, I know we mentioned this in our last meeting, but just to Jonathan's facilities report, you know, some of the initial phase of the work at Bob Lucas is kind of wrapped up, and it just, it looks so amazing. I can't wait to see everything completed there. But just to, I just wanted to highlight and thank specifically Levi Brewster, who put in a tremendous amount of volunteer work to kind of help lead that effort along with many, many other volunteers, judging by the report, but I wanted to specifically make sure I thanked him as well.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Terry, please.
Yeah, I stopped by there on my bike the other day and wandered in and really was really was struck with all of the progress they've made and that great willing spirit of all those people pitching together. It was like a barn raising in Altadena, and I really liked that idea. We need more of that. But kudos to everybody. And Bridget, I see you're on the line there. I didn't know Levi was your son, but I figured that out finally by the end of the session. So it was really fun to go by there, see you.
Awesome. Other comments or notes? Betsy, please, go ahead.
I just want to give a shout out to Isabel. The teen services report was incredible. 964 views of her programs and 92 live attendees. I mean, you know, I've worked with teenagers, sometimes it's really, really hard to get their attention. And so, I don't know, maybe it was October, maybe that's why, and you know, they're into the spooky stuff. But I just, it's just been so great to sort of see the trajectory of her success, as somebody who's been able to kind of rope them in. I was just so, so thrilled to see that. Just one library nerd moment on page 14. Personally, I think it's really cool to get a buy-back program for weeded materials. As somebody who's been told, "Don't ever put a book in the garbage," because somebody will bring it back to you and say, "Oh my gosh, you lost this book." For them to actually figure out a productive way to dispense with weeded materials is a coup, take it from me. And I don't know, maybe Nikki, you can answer this question. I always have a question about Christopher's report. What is a Mavic Air 2 drone for multimedia?
Ah, Christopher. Tell me his report.
His reports are always so cryptic, and I just kind of feel like I want to know. I learn something every time.
My understanding is that he has purchased a drone for Chloe to be able to like use for video or pictures and other things like that. So, we really want to capture before and after, especially as it relates to the building projects.
So it really means a drone, a real drone.
Christopher, since my first meeting with him last year, has, it's a goal of his to be delivering books with a drone. So, that's probably coming too, just to let you know.
Take that, Amazon.
He literally said to me, our first meeting, like, "Amazon is exploring the technology. We're going to keep it on our radar." And I was like, "Okay, Christopher."
You go.
But yeah, it's, they're gonna use it for multimedia purposes to capture videos and pictures and things like that. So, yeah.
I just have one other comment to make, which is actually not in this report, but I was in the community room the other day picking up a hold, and Mark was on duty, and he was chatting with Margaret about his Star Wars class that he has on the YouTube channel. And I said, "Sorry for eavesdropping," but I have to know about that, not because I'm a Star Wars nerd, but I'm sure like all of you know some really serious Star Wars nerds, and I have had so much fun forwarding that video, and people are just blown away by it. So even though it's not in here anywhere, because it's, I think it's been around for a while, I just didn't know about it. You know any Star Wars nerds? Send them Mark's video.
Awesome, thank you. Any other comments or observations on the consent calendar? Camila, please.
I just was going to comment, in this first section, I use a little flag to highlight that the civic engagement kits and the vote that happened was super-duper cute. And I'm a little bit sad that Severus Snape came in second and not first, but I thought that was a really cool way to implement, you know, a lesson around civic engagement. I just, I read it and I got so excited. So, I just wanted to say, you know, whoop-whoop on that, and I'll make a joke about a recount for Severus Snape, but I'll just let that go.
Awesome, awesome. Alright, and I will, I will just add very briefly, I was excited to see the work of Community Asset Mapping continuing, something that we started during the strategic planning process as a way of starting to represent visually some of the relationships around Altadena. And I'm so thrilled to see that that's getting picked up, getting used, getting expanded into its next iteration. That's really gratifying to see that work continuing. So, with that, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. So if there is no further discussion, we will proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Kapal.
Hi.
Trustee Khan.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Hi.
Anna and I vote for me, so that's received and filed. Thank you so much. For anybody joining us, we did have to move our special presentation for our district audit to the beginning of our agenda this evening, due to some time constraints on our auditor's part, but that is certainly on the YouTube. You can go back and take a look at it. And if there are any public comments related to that item, I'd be happy to take those now or at any point later in the agenda, should they arise. Alright, that brings us to Section 6, our reports, and I believe we have Bridget with us from the Foundation. Oh, you're muted, Bridget.
I always think I'm so cool because I remember to click on the video, but-
You are very cool, but you are-
Oh yeah, right, right. Our Foundation Board of Directors is really, really excited and enthusiastic now about our future and the role that we're going to play in the library going forward. We, we really recognize that this is going to be a challenging time, but also a rewarding time for us, because now, we're going to take the time to examine, you know, who we've been, but who do we need to become in order to fully and properly serve the library and the library needs now. So, we'll be having a planning retreat in January to begin to think creatively and strategically about what do our goals need to be now? What, what are we going to do for the library? How is that going to look going forward? And at our last meeting, we accepted three applications to fill board seats on the Foundation, so we're pretty excited about that as well. And then, we took a giant leap at our last meeting and voted to establish a permanent irrevocable and voted to establish a permanent irrevocable endowment through the Pasadena Community Foundation. So that no matter what happens in the future, there will be a fund there to help with the needs of the library. And we really believe this is something that will appeal to a lot of families who may be thinking about how to leave a legacy for the Altadena community and the library specifically. So we're, we're really pretty excited. We've been thinking about it ever since I've been on the board. So for at least three or four years now, we've been, but we've had to wait because we knew we needed to consider the immediate capital needs of the library. And now with Measure Z making that possible, we felt like this is the time to take some of our assets and put it aside to ensure a future built upon those who started this foundation and respecting their hard work in earning all of the money that we have had in our foundation. So we're really, really excited about that. And then in concluding the report, we really wanted to take a minute to really express some gratitude to Betsy Khan for all the work that you have put in over the last few years. And we just want to really wish you well. And we want you to know we're going to keep a seat open for you. When you're ready to come back and serve, we'll always have a seat for you on the foundation board of directors. So we wish you well and we wish all of you Thanksgiving filled with goodness. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bridget.
You're welcome. You're very, very welcome.
Thanks so much, Bridget. That's great news. That's a huge step for the foundation. So really, really exciting. Okay, I believe Nikki, you've got a little update for us on behalf of the Friends. Is that right?
Yes, thank you so much. I attended the Friends board meeting on the first Saturday of the month, whatever the date was. As you know, we are not accepting donations. We don't have volunteers in the building right now. And with the way things are going, we don't, they don't foresee that happening anytime soon, to be honest with you. So really, their focus has been on virtual events. So I know they held a meeting with anyone on their board, or I don't know if they sent it out to the membership to continue to plan virtual events, including a holiday themed book pitch potentially, some classic holiday player novel reading. They're just like trying to come up with different ways to engage their membership. And, and I also know that there was some conversation during the meeting about, like, do we ask people to renew their membership? Do we consider this year like a wash? So I feel like the Friends are in a state of not really knowing what to do because they're not doing book sales. So I'm just going to continue to work with them and strategize about if and when they're going to be able to come back in the building and what it's going to look like. Because I think I've mentioned to you guys before, when we open the, the door to donations, it's going to be like, you know, the floodgates are open. So I want to be really strategic with them so that we, whether, how that's going to look and when they're going to feel safe. So again, their, their focus right now is more so on virtual events and they continue to meet on the first Friday of the month. I don't know if, Terry, are you, you're the liaison with me, right?
Yeah, I was at that meeting too. And they are, they do seem to be struggling a little bit with what to do since their primary, you know, activity has been taken away and that's getting, having the book fair though, so, or the book sale. So they have lots of ideas about how they might get a jumpstart, but, but nothing was really quite jelling. So I think that they're, they're searching around a little bit now how to be useful, how to feel useful. And it's, it's, it's hard, hard for any of us to feel really useful in this pandemic. So they're looking forward to the day when they can get back into the rhythm where the book sells, I'm sure.
Yep, exactly. So that's what I would assume their report to us would be. And I'll continue to meet with them and dialogue as we move forward. But it's an interesting time to be a Friends group.
Certainly. Betsy, please.
I feel like the library, the library needs friends more than ever, both small F and capital F. And I guess I would just ask maybe both Terry and Nikki if you would pass on my wish, my hope. Don't make it a wash. I mean, don't, don't lose the connection with our membership. And we, I think in these days and in these times, we need, we need to be connecting more. And I get it. I mean, I get they're all about the book sales. I mean, believe me, I've been reading those scrapbooks from the basement and they've been doing book sales for decades and they do it so well. But I would just say, you know, just because they can't do book sales doesn't make them irrelevant. We, we need, we need psychic friendship. So please don't let those connections wither, even though we can't be selling books.
Oh, for sure.
I agree with that. And for anybody that's interested, their next meeting is on the fifth of December and you can call in at noon. Claire Newman is still, you know, living in Oxford or somewhere is still on the call. It must be eight o'clock at night for her. But I do think that we, you know, we're doing a, we did a job of interacting with them and paying attention and so on. And they're just, you know, just on, on steady ground right now, I think. And but it'll, it'll clear up. It'll be going again.
Yeah. And, and part of the conversation in terms of the membership discussion was, this is the opportunity to connect with their membership and say, like, unfortunately, we can't fundraise through book sales right now, but that's why your membership is more important than ever, you know? And that's how you can support the library and continuing to find ways. And, and the other thing, you know, because they were a little bit hesitant about, you know, we, we didn't offer as much this year. So what did your membership pay for? And I said, like, look at our YouTube page, like, everything that we've done in terms of virtual content and a lot of the events and the things that we're doing and that, that, that's what their money is paying for. And I, you know, just emphasizing and providing them with all of these resources that the Friends funds, that's what has allowed these things to happen. You know, all of the summer reading program kits that people took home. I mean, those were like so popular and that was 500 people that stopped at the library to pick up these kits for their kids or even the adults, you know? So the Friends are as important, if, if not more than ever. So we'll continue to have that same conversation, like you said, Betsy.
Okay. Thanks so much. So Nikki, let's just segue right into your director's report, if you would please.
Yeah, of course. So good evening, trustees, staff and members of the public tuning in. I wanted to start out by congratulating Lori Newthing. She's worked for us, I believe, since 2018. She was hired as a page, then promoted into a library clerk position. And we had the opportunity to transition her downstairs into technical services, which was a, like, her goal was to work with the technical services department. And she was on a three-month introductory period and has now been promoted to library technician. So congratulations to her. She's working out splendidly downstairs. I also wanted to congratulate Corriez Martinez, who's been a page for us for the past five years. He got a full-time job with the city of Pasadena, which was like his goal. So we're really sad to see him go, but congratulate him on getting that full-time job. And we expect to see him riding by on his skateboard and visiting us when the library is open. Like, I sit in my office and I watch him go by, you know? In addition to that, our new youth and family services librarian, her name is Yvette Casillas. She's going to be starting with us a week from tomorrow, so on December first. She'll be joining Meiling and Isabel as well as the rest of the staff. And we're really excited to bring her on board. She actually comes to us from school librarians. She works in a, in a public school, Betsy, I thought you'd find that interesting. So she's bringing a whole different skill set that we're really excited about. So hopefully we'll be able to introduce her to the board at the next meeting. But it was a very competitive recruitment. We had a lot of amazing candidates and we're really excited to bring Yvette on board next week. We did have, with Corriez leaving, a library aide recruitment is open. Well, it actually closed. We have over forty applicants, many of which are local, either high school or college students, several of which go to PCC, interestingly. So we're going to be moving forward on an interview process soon. It's just an interesting time to be onboarding people with everything that's going on, which I'm about to get into. So we should be hiring one or two new pages soon. So we're excited about that as well. Lots of recruitment going on. I also wanted to formally congratulate Rushmore Cervantes, who the board voted to appoint to fill trustee Khan's vacancy last week on Thursday. Katie, Natalia and I have set up a meeting with him next week, so we'll begin that transitioning process of getting him on the board. I did want to just remind everyone that we have scheduled a board orientation slash retreat for Friday, January eighth, from nine AM to one PM. So just a reminder to get, add that to your calendar. So I'm sure it's no surprise that we have closed our in-person browsing and computer access as of today with the surgeon cases both in LA, California and the country. We do still have curbside available at both library branches and have many appointments already scheduled this week. So just a reminder that you can set up curbside appointments at Main from eleven to one and four to six, Monday through Saturday, and at the Bob Lucas branch, Monday through Friday from ten to one and three, three to five. Sadly, we also had to close our passports office. People were very excited. We relocated them downstairs to the basement, so they had an external door. So people were able to like wait outside. It was, it's been very popular. I think last week when I met with Tony, they'd been open for two and a half weeks. They already had processed almost fifty passports. So it is a bummer. And that's one of the things that we're going to just continue to assess. If we feel like we can safely offer passports appointments even before we open up for in-person browsing, we, we will definitely look into that because there's a very, very high demand for the passport service. So as of right now, we're also looking at having more, we're having staff, more staff work at home right now based on recommendations coming out of LA County Public Health to limit as much exposure to each other as we possibly can with the surgeon cases that are taking place. So we've taken most of the public service full-time staff and they're working in the building one week and then working at home one week. So again, we came up with a really robust work from home plan. Where, and the, the staff are working closely with their managers to making sure that we're being as productive as possible. But again, limiting how many people we have in the building right now. So we're hoping to assess all of this in the new year and hopefully we'll be able to expand services once again to include in-person browsing and computer access. So I would like to wholeheartedly thank the Measure Z Campaign Committee, the board members who were involved, as well as everyone in the community that pulled together to help us pass Measure Z with seventy-two point three percent yes votes. What an amazing accomplishment when you consider the fact that it had to all be done like remotely and virtually. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who was involved. And I'm excited to see all that we're going to be able to accomplish because of that amazing effort from that committee, that campaign committee. So I believe I mentioned last month that we were selected as one of the seven projects chosen to be part of the Library Journal Design Institute Design Challenge. It was held last week on Wednesday, the eighteenth, and we had eighty people attend our charrette in the Zoom room and many great ideas that came out for both design, services and layout of the main library as we move forward. We were paired up with Anderson Brulei Architects or ABA, and they were a really great firm to work with, similar to ARG, brought different things to the table. And I think being able to be part of that is really going to inform the work that we're going to be doing on the building projects moving forward. So again, it was, it was really exciting. So through the Hidden Histories partnership with Altadena Historical Society and Altadena Town Council, we helped produce the recent Altadena Heroes event on October twenty-fifth with Altadena Arts, a new nonprofit supporting local art initiatives. The event brought community members together virtually to enjoy pictures, videos and brief presentations with a focus on renowned Altadena artist Charles White, author Octavia Butler, the Buffalo Soldiers and Bob Lucas, champion of literacy in Altadena and the namesake of our Bob Lucas Memorial Library. In addition to this amazing virtual event, we've also posted our first episode of the new This is Altadena podcast focused on Charles White's legacy in Altadena and includes brief interviews with town council member Veronica Jones, local artist Kenny Arts and the founder of the new Altadena Arts organization Eugene Hutchins. If you haven't checked it out, I would highly encourage. You can find it on any podcast platform that you use. I listened to it on Saturday. It was so interesting and entertaining. So thank you to Chloe and Ben, who's on our staff, as well as Isabel and Erin. They're, they've taken this podcast project on and I think it was a raving success. And then lastly, I also wanted to plug the Hundred Years of Light, celebrating CTLA or Christmas Tree Lane Association. Melissa and Chloe have been working with CTLA and Altadena Historical Society to produce a series of videos documenting brief glimpses into the history of Christmas Tree Lane. In lieu of in-person programming, sadly, there won't be the lighting festival, which was one of the first things I attended last year. So wow, how things have changed in a year. They're producing thirteen short vignettes and a compilation movie of all will be published in the second week of December. I believe it's supposed to be on the original tree lighting date, which is December twelfth. Melissa has led the coordination of the filming and I would highly encourage all of you to check it out. CTLA has actually put together an app and the videos will be on the app as well. So as you drive down the lane and check out the lights, you can have the app playing these really cool videos as well. So as you read in Victor's report, we're also looking to find connections in the community through the community asset mapping activities in our adult services team, which is going to expand to include all departments in the future. We're looking at exploring our existing relationships that we have and identifying those that we need to make. So I did want to put a plug. The staff have been putting in a lot of time working on that community asset mapping, building off of what was done through the strategic planning last year as well. So kudos to Victor and his team for continuing to identify ways to help us connect with organizations and people in the community. So it is with such sadness that I say farewell to Betsy. With tonight being your last meeting with us, thank you for everything that you've done for the Altadena Library District and community in the last few years and for welcoming me and helping me and providing so much information. It's really been great to work with you and don't be a stranger. Hopefully we can have lunch in person in the future. But thank you for everything that you've done for the board. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Nikki. I do feel like finding you was one of the best things that I was a part of. So I just feel like I know that, I know that the district is in such good hands. So I appreciate that a lot. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think your, your leadership helps steer it to where we are now. And what, what an amazing change in the last couple of years. I'd also like to say happy birthday to Camila, whose birthday is on Wednesday. And happy birthday to Jason, whose birthday is on Thursday. So happy birthday to both of you. I hope you get to eat lots of turkey and pie and cake. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Definitely happy birthdays. Any questions for Nikki? Go ahead.
I was just saying thank you. Okay. I just wanted to say really quickly, I don't know if everybody saw it in the wealth of awesome things, but that infographic about our circulation is really cool. It's so cool. It's on page something of your report. I'm sorry.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. And it's awesome. A hundred, I mean, it makes me a little sad because obviously our doors are closed. But last year, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-six people walked through our doors. That is almost three times the population of Altadena. Almost three hundred thousand visits to the website. I mean, that's awesome. That is just awesome. And it's really fun to see everything sort of visualized like this. I, I was, I, the design nerd in me was like really, really pumped about it. Love it infographic. All right. Anything else for Nikki? Okay, thank you so much, Nikki. Let's move on to our finance report, beginning on page seventy-six of your packet. Of course, we've already had our audit report. But Nicole, what have you got for us?
I don't think Nicole's still in.
Oh, just kidding.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, it's only been two and a half hours.
Well, yeah, she was technically off today, so.
Well, and this, yeah, she was technically off today, so it's, it's been an interesting day. But I'm happy to read through the report with you. Let me pull it up, sorry.
All good. So that begins on uh page seventy-six of your package.
I'm getting. Let's see what was of note this month.
One thing I kind of liked about a report like this is that, you know, we're twenty-five percent through the budget year. She's got September compiled here, so you can run through it and take a look on the percentage of the budget off to the side, when you get into the profit and loss versus budget, budget versus actual. You kind of take a look at how we're doing real quickly, you know, on all of the different categories.
Yeah, so I think, you know, she typically just uh points out. So we received um seven thousand one hundred and forty-two in income with two film production companies. Uh, we've had many film uh companies reach out to us, be it for commercials or actually to use our parking lot. So that was a unexpected thing that we didn't even really build into the budget this year, because there wasn't much um filming or rental income last year. So that was a, a pleasant surprise, and we continue to have conversations. Like, we've been reached uh contacted by Netflix to serve as a, a workplace in one of their series. So again, that was pretty exciting, because we, we didn't anticipate that income. Uh, we also received in September uh the E-rate internet service reimbursement from last year. So that was a high rate. Um expenditures, let's see, we spent, you know, there was the sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars that went to Best Fest and Krieger for the um CFD formation fees. So that was um an additional expense. And a total of twelve thousand twenty-one dollars and seventeen cents was spent for new office furniture and cupical dividers for both the circulation office and the assistant library director's office. Uh, much of that was put into effect to create that social distancing we need um for staff. So the, you guys haven't seen it, you'll see it when you can come in the building again, but um the staff completely are walled off from each other now in that space. Um, and then a deposit was paid for LA Art Labs for their initial work on the restoration of the painting. And as far as I know, we're supposed to be getting that back anytime now. So I'm sure I'll have an update for the board next month on the painting. Um, so I think those were the main things of note. Um, were there any questions about the financials this month?
Um, I just had one question, and it's not hugely critical. Um, but I just noticed uh that the branch services program budget, so that's line item six-two-three-zero under programs, that that budget is about a little bit more than halfway spent through. And I was just wondering, is that a function of, of some of the adaptations that have been necessary to change services at the branch, or, or why is, why is that expenditure kind of a little bit ahead of what we might expect it to be?
Um, that's definitely something I would uh have to talk to Diana about, but I, I would assume it was related to the civic engagement kits.
Yeah, it was gonna be my other question is, was there, was there programming that sort of happened once a year, and it was, you know, September, November, or something like that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why that number's so high.
Okay.
My understanding also is that we were, we're, we're working towards combining things to either fall under youth services, teen services, or adult services, rather than um, because the, the way we're approaching programming now is that the work that we're doing at Bob Lucas is in coordination with those overarching programmatic themes. Um, so I'm not sure why that is, but I can find out for you.
Okay, yeah, just, just curious. Um, and I, I imagine it's probably a combination of all those things plus other line items picking up some of the actual programming costs.
Yep.
Okay, that was it for me. Any other questions or comments on finances? Terry?
Uh, no.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you so much. So that brings us into our committee reports. Um, beginning with our budget committee report, and you'll find that written report on page ninety of your board package. Um, Terry, you want to just give us a real quick summary?
Sure. Yeah, Katie and Nikki and I got together to uh talk about the the audited report that we had got earlier. So we got a lot of information about that there. This is sort of a, a bare bones uh report in that it really just took a look at stuff. Nicole took us through it. And we noticed, I noticed that our net position is up by twenty-five thousand dollars. We did that a little walkthrough earlier with Paul today. But it was the first time in three years, basically, that that thing has trended up, that net position has trended up. So it's, it eked out a modest little game, and you know, it was just, it was fun to see that happen. There were some questions that I had that Paul answered tonight about why the fluctuations and the uh, the uh, the benefits for um that, that term that they use for um employee benefits, the post, post-employment benefits other than pensions, that I had, why it was fluctuating and why we had different sort of rates going on. But he explained it to my satisfaction today by talking about the different um indexes that they use to calculate contributions and so on. And then the main thing that he said there that struck me was just take a look at the, the fee that we built in, sixty thousand dollars or so every month, which are the um kind of the core fees that we have to pay for that. So really, not a lot to talk about in the budget committee, other than that. Um, we will have a budget review scheduled probably for late um January or early February, where we go through and make any adjustments that we need to the, to the budget itself to compensate for money winding up in another category, et cetera. So really, not, not a lot happened at that. It was a brief meeting. I think it was a half an hour, which is some kind of record for having a library meeting. And uh, I think the heavy lifting for us as a committee would be later when, in the month of January or February, when we talk about shifts of the revenue or the expenses that we want to do.
Yep. Okay, pretty easy. Um, I will just note that it did make me laugh that Paul said, uh, you know what, don't even try to understand OPEP. It's not worth your time. Don't worry about it. Because we sure did spend a lot of time trying to work it out. We did the at-home version, and we did not totally succeed. And then he said, you know what?
Yeah.
The phrase that jumped out at me was smoke and mirrors.
Smoke and mirrors. That's what you want to hear from a government agency, right? Like, that controls pension benefits. You're like, you know, it's just all lies. That's, that's great. Um, but we did try really hard to understand it, so I feel confident that we are at least doing our fiduciary responsibility to all of our benefit holders. Okay, other committees, uh, California Voting Rights Act, really no major updates here. Um, unless Betsy, you have anything to add. I know you've got a pretty good uh governmental liaison report in a minute, so we'll come to that. Public Funding Committee, um, no real report here, other than to say that um once election results are certified by LA County and by the State of California and all those various bodies that certify election results, um, that committee will dissolve. So it basically will dissolve at some point between now and December. And you will see on the December agenda, a whole bunch of stuff related to CFD formation and all kinds of resolutions, and we'll have to do some new committee formations. But for, for now, um, we're just waiting for uh the sort of final stamp to be put on everything, so it's, it's totally official. So you'll see a whole lot of CFD-related business in December. Um, okay, liaison reports. Um, any liaison reports for the Friends of Foundation? I think we kind of covered this earlier, but anything in addition? Okay, perfect. Uh, trustee reports, and of course, Betsy has provided.
Can I just back up to my government relations liaison report?
Oh, I blew it and forgot that it was in that category. Sorry, yes.
And don't worry, I'm not gonna go through it bullet by bullet. Um, and if, you know, if you're interested in reading the whole document from which all these things were derived, it's linked there where it says twenty-twenty year-end legislative report that came from CSDA. It was just an interesting time of year to sort of see what they've been up to all this time in terms of bills they've been following and what their statuses are. So just, just to clarify terminology, which I learned along the way, a, a bill that is chapered means that it's, it's not dead. I mean, it's like, it's making its way through the system. It's kind of on hold. It's, it's not passed. It's not, it's not defeated. It's not vetoed. It's not signed. It's just sort of in, in the sausage-making machine. Um, so you know, i- if, if in reviewing your packet, you didn't have a ti- a chance to uh just glance at this, it's an interesting, it's just an interesting bunch of stuff, and it's the stuff that I, I pulled out that I thought, gee, could this have anything to do with us? So it's not completely comprehensive in terms of, you know, what they reported on, because there's a lot of stuff that doesn't apply to us. I did, at the bottom of this page, the one that's labeled on page ninety-one, the bill that's labeled AB six-eighty-five, that had to do with COVID exposure in the, in the workplace. I just uh copied and pasted that entire thing, because I think, you know, that's probably more for Nikki's sake and management's sake than anybody. That's kind of important granular detail that, that you will want to know if this bill actually does get passed in terms of how COVID gets handled in the workplace. So that's why that one is so long. Um, on page ninety-two, there's a whole list of bills that didn't make it through. Kind of interesting to just review the things that might have happened, but didn't like. The, the first one especially was interesting that you might, you know, if you were to run for a trustee's position again, Camilla, you might have been able to use your campaign funds for childcare. But sorry, that, that got defeated, or never, never even made it. So anyway, again, I'm not gonna go through all the bullets, but uh just a, just a pretty um succinct summary of a giant report about um bills that, that were um uh talked about in the California Legislature this past year. So if you have any questions, I probably can't answer them, but I'd be happy to try.
Listen, you could be a legislator when this is all done, with all of this following the bills and stuff.
Good, thank you. I'll just be a voter.
Any questions for Betsy on any of those items? Okay, well, thank you so much, Betsy, for that very comprehensive report. All right, trustee reports. Um, I know, Betsy, you do have a trustee report as well, and in my brain I had combined them. Um, and so would you, would you like to go ahead and?
Sure, let me just, um, I just want, and can, just in case you're not a member of Altadena Heritage, or you didn't, I, I guess this is, this is the place that you would see the article. I know Katie sent around to a lot of people the op-ed piece that I wrote that was derived from the same research that I have been doing for fun. Um, but this was my original idea, was to find out about who the boy Georgie was and, you know, how, how he accomplished what he did. So um I, I just include it here for your reading pleasure. Um, and uh, I think it's, it's just been a really interesting ride to, to piece together, I just felt like investigative reporting, you know, to piece together all the news articles and all the clippings in the basement box of scrapbooks and the various people that I, that I spoke to um in doing this, in doing the research for this article. So I just kind of give that to you as my parting little bit of work. And uh, I know, and beyond that, I just, I just want to say um, it's hard to leave. Um, but I, it just, just feel like at this point in my life and my recently retired career, it's, it is just kind of time. I, I had no idea what I was getting into when I raised my hand in two thousand eighteen. Um, but it, it was gratifying to um find out that um having raised three sons and worked in, working in the middle school for twenty years gave me a unique set of skills to bring to bear on uh kind of a chaotic situation. So um, I'm just grateful that, you know, you all came along for the ride. I'm grateful to Terry for having been there pretty quick after I showed up. And I, I just feel like it's a, it's, it's just a testament to the basic health of our town, that the love of this library is so strong and so fundamental that, you know, when it needs, when it needs who it needs, the people show up who need to show up. And I feel like, I know, I just showed up at a Sa- Saturday, you know, second Saturday concert one night, and Karen Gibson, who some of you know as a, as a NBBA person in a row, um, mover and shaker in town, just said, hey, there's a vacancy on the library board. You think you might be interested in it? And I'm like, hmm. So that, she's the one who planted the seed, and uh it's been a great ride, and I'm grateful to all of you. I'm so grateful to Nikki for showing up when she did. I'm grateful to Cindy Cleary for kind of holding it together for us uh while we got our act together, and I think her involvement kind of made us seem like we were a team that it might be okay to join. Um, and I think that has cascaded. I mean, that, that has just cascaded down to every, every person that Nikki's been able to hire and, and you know, right on through Measures Z. So thanks to everybody, and it's been fun, and you ain't seen the last of me. I'm one of those patrons who comes every other day, so I'll be seeing.
Well, I think that this uh feels like an appropriate time for all of us to also express our just profound appreciation and gratitude to you, Betsy, for everything that you've brought to this board, to this library, to the community. Um, you know, I know, I personally feel like I've, I've learned so much from you in our very short time together, and I, I will really miss hearing your perspective on all of our library decisions, but also just your, your very genuine and warm care for all the patrons of our library and our staff and, and all the services that, that the library provides. So I'm gonna really miss you, and I know that you'll be around, but it'll be, it'll be really sad not to see you every month. But I am just, I'm so grateful for everything you've done and the, the opportunity to serve alongside you. So thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
And you've been a good scribe, Betsy, with the article. I, this was an excellent article by, about Boyd Georgie and the editorials I've enjoyed reading in the Star News and elsewhere. So thanks for being that uh, that really good uh written voice for us. It was terrific. And on this, I just had to ask a question about the Boyd Georgie article. I'd never seen a picture of the guy, so that was a kind of a bonus. Where did you come up with that, or did somebody else find that for you?
Um, I, um, I, I first saw this picture in an, in an architectural um application submitted to the Pasadena uh planning commission, I don't know, whoever it is that decides whether a building gets landmark status for a home that Boyd Georgie designed and built over near the Laloma Bridge on that side of town in the ni- in the late nineteen fifties. It's called the Puelichar House. If you, if you Google that, P-U-E-L-I-C-H-R, house, as I did, uh, you'll end up finding out about a, a current architect who just restored that house. And as part of that restoration, they applied for landmark status, which I believe they've got. And his picture was in that, in that application. So when I tracked down his son Carl, the one who got all the credit for the bike rack, who, you know, is a retired person. He lives in Maryland, I, you know, and I, I managed to, I managed to track down his grandson's cellphone number and texted him and said, are, are you related to Boyd Georgie? Said, yeah, that's, that's my grandpa. I'm sure my dad would be willing to talk to you. Um, and I, and I had this long conversation with Carl, and I asked him about that picture, uh, because it said in the, in this application that it was courtesy of, of his family. And I just asked him, could I have it for the um, for this article? And he said, sure. I'm a little mortified that they've misspelled his name on the caption.
On the rest of the article, it's pretty good.
Yeah. Um, the picture of Glass Babcock I found in one of those scrapbooks. And, and you, you, it got cropped. She's, she's stamped, she's sitting next to an eight-millimeter projector with some like business people who, I don't know, did some presentation at the library. Um, so um Mark Goldschmidt, who is um uh Michelle Zach's husband, is the editor of this newsletter. And my first draft that I sent to him, um, he said, we need a picture of Glass Babcock, because we can't give the men all the glory. because we can't give the men all the glory. Because I had talked about Boyd Georgie, I got in this picture of Owen Peters from his firm. And so it was fun to go digging for that picture of Glass Babcock. And just as an aside, I don't know if I've said this already, so forgive me if I'm repeating myself. But next time you're in the building, I, I, I spotted this the last time I was there, this last week, that beautiful sculpture that's right by the front door with the owl, the tree and the owl, there's a little plaque underneath it that says it's from Maurice and Ann Fletcher and their, their children. And in the, in the text of this article, that name might ring a bell because she was the president of the board in the early sixties when they fat, when they passed the bond measure that built the building. And I just have this feeling that it's no accident that it was two women, no offense, guys, that it was two women in the early sixties in Altadena that somehow got enough people to agree to come to consensus to make that happen. And insofar as I'm starting to get the sense that maybe local history is now maybe a new hobby for me in my retirement. I may, I may track down Ann Fletcher's kids and find out about her and find out kind of what, what kind of relationship she had with Glass Babcock and how they managed to pull that off. Because um, there's, there's a story that, there's a picture of these two little ladies with a shovel breaking the ground at the Mariposa site in nineteen sixty, I don't know, several years before the building got built. And they just look like a couple, you know, they don't, they, they look very unassuming. And I just have a feeling they're, they were mighty, mighty women and I, and I want to know more about them. So anyway, this was super fun and I look forward to, to maybe doing more. And and and, and by the way, Lori, Lori, who was mentioned earlier, who just got that promotion, has been doing a lot of digitizing of those, of those old records in terms of, because I'm telling you, these scrapbooks are falling apart and the, the little clippings that all the friends of the library lo- lovely women over the years have like put in with glue, they're all falling out. So I'm really glad to know that um, that, that Lori has been at least, you know, has been involved and I hope will continue to, to do, to do some work to preserve that history of our, of our district because it, it, it will, it will crumble otherwise.
Okay, thank you. Any other trustee reports that anybody would like to make at this point?
Just a quick comment for me.
Please.
That I did go and then some of you also might have gone to the Mellow Roos um for that financing group, and it was the online thing about setting up your C F D and all the other stuff that goes along with it. And I was, I felt a little overwhelmed by all the stuff that happens with terms of consultants and everything else. So uh, that was my first exposure that I guess went to expect going forward, but it was very useful. And um, it really has some good tips and good pointers about what's going on. So.
Okay, great. Anything else? All right, very good. Then that brings us into our new business. Uh, how's everybody doing? We all right? Keep going, we're almost there. Okay. So item eight A is review and approval of the A L D personnel policy, which is phone book that uh landed in your inbox or on your desktop uh this week. And Nikki, maybe you can give us a little summary of all the personnel policies that we're looking at and where we are in that process.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, of course. Good evening. So it was actually set as one of my goals um in my six-month evaluation to review and update the personnel policies. Um, as you can see in the staff report, we've basically been working out of two different, one's called the employee handbook, the other's the personnel policies. Personnel policies were approved in two thousand eight. The handbook was written in two thousand seventeen, last updated in two thousand eighteen when we had our H R outsourced to H R Network. But like, they just weren't comprehensive, so we've had to work off of both. So Cindy, who did a policy audit, thank goodness for her, it just was very clear that we needed to update the personnel policies. So Nicole and I have been working on these diligently since pretty much coming back to the building in May. Um, as you know, we brought you the attendance policy, which was something we didn't have as part of either of our um existing policies. And that was approved back in September. But in addition to that, you see the other hundred pages of policy that her and I basically worked off of the two thousand eight version and updated it, um, including um some of the things in the newer version that, you know, obviously came into law since then. So what we're presenting tonight is all of those policies put together. I did want to um let you know that we first gave the policies to our equity, diversity and inclusion team to review through the lens of, you know, making sure all of our policies are being as equitable, fair and inclusive as possible. We met with them, we incorporated um pretty much all of their suggestions into the policy. It was a lot of just like um language and um, you know, other things, but we included that. We also sent um this version to B B and K to review for legal compliance. And then lastly, we shared the policies with all of the staff so that they could provide feedback as well. So what you're looking at tonight, and again, if there's um updates that you would like to see, we can bring this back to you again in December with updates. Or if if you feel like it, it looks good to go, you could vote to approve them tonight. So I'm happy to answer. And Nicole did jump back in to the Zoom room. So if you have questions, we're both here to answer them.
Okay, perfect. Um, I will just start by saying that this is so much work. Um, it's so, I mean, I'm not telling you like you don't know that, but I'm just, it's so much work. And I know you guys have been, you know, chipping away at this for months and months and months, and it is a huge deal. So I almost hesitate to ask you this next question, which is um, do we have a mechanism in place for a periodic review of our policies once this whole deal is adopted? Like, does that, is there a provision somewhere where we review all of our policies every three years, every five years, something like that, just to kind of do an audit? Um, I know that that's, we do that with our board policies as sort of a built-in check and balance. But what about in terms of our personnel policies?
Nicole, can you speak to that? Like, do we have some type of a schedule that we've created to review? I know we're, the, the next thing we're going to tackle is the financial policies, and I think those schedule of how often that should be done.
Um, yeah, the financial policies are supposed to be audited annually. Our investment policy, at the very least, has to be updated every year. We didn't build in a mechanism to update the personnel policies, but um I personally was going to reevaluate them every two years.
Yeah, that seems right. I mean, I remember seeing when we were doing some of the foundational work with Cindy. Um, I think it was with Cindy, or maybe it was right at the beginning of your time with us, Nikki. There was a, like a handy chart of how often we review each policy and when it gets looked at and how that happened. I guess I just, I wonder, since it's such a substantial undertaking, if we should codify that someplace um to, to make sure it actually happens and to also build time for that in people's work plans. Because obviously it's a huge undertaking to, you know, audit and update.
Well, and and as you mentioned, when Cindy did the policy audit, it's, it is a spreadsheet of what we currently have, the last time it was updated, if it needs updating, and then also a comparative review of which policies we don't have that other similar-sized districts or um systems have. So like, for example, the teleworking one, which has been interesting that I wrote that when I, or you know, I drafted it when I did, was one of the things we didn't have. So currently, right now, um Victor is working with some of the other managers to update all of our library operations policies. But what I'll do is make a note, is just basically to take what Cindy put together and create a schedule out of it, of how often they're going to be updated.
Yep, that seems right.
Yeah, no problem.
That's not really a change to any of the policies, but I do think it would be a helpful calendar to have, to have hold on. Yeah, okay. Other questions, observations, comments?
I just want to thank, thank the team that did all this work. Um, when I first joined the board, you know, had a lot of concerns with that two thousand eight document as such as it existed. And I think uh that played at least a small role in some of the challenges that the library faced prior to the current leadership we all have. And so I'm, I'm really happy to see uh the end result um with all of the updates and changes.
Thanks. Betsy, I think I saw a hand from you. Sorry.
Yeah, just a couple of small uh edits, maybe. Um, one is, maybe you're, maybe you're going to do this already, but just in flipping around this, you know, dozens of pages document, it would be great to have a cover that just had the table of contents with the numbers of the major sections, just so you have an idea of where stuff is.
I hope Nicole has that, is that right?
Okay, maybe you just didn't include it in here because that, that would be a useful thing.
I did, I'm waiting for the final page numbers before I finalize. I do intend to break it down like into each section, yeah.
Great, great. Then I, I'm, I'm noticing um uh in section six point six, which is on page one hundred and seven, compared to section thirteen point one point three, which is on page one hundred and sixty-three, there's a little bit of a difference when it talks about the introductory period and when written performances are done. On page one hundred and seven, it says at three months and at, and at five months. And on page one hundred and sixty-three, it says at three months and at six months.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm, I've read it a couple of times and it does seem like it's referring to the same thing. So you might want to decide which one is going to be, and make it consistent.
Yeah.
Um, I, and then I've seen something else that I.
Yeah, there was a little bit of um debate about it because if someone's not going to pass the introductory period, like you would need to do it ahead of that six-month timeframe.
Yeah.
But we, we've updated the form so that if a person at three months is not on track, it will prompt that five month. So anyway, we, we, I, but I think it should say six. Is that what we ended up deciding, Nicole?
Yeah, we'll update it to six.
Yeah. Um, the only other thing I want to point out on page one sixty-seven is that I was really glad to see the whole thing about appeal to the board because I do feel like that was an area of a lot of confusion and, and distress in past situations where staff didn't feel like they had any recourse, they didn't know what to do, they didn't know who to talk to, and they would just go straight to board members, I think. I mean, this is kind of before our time. But anyway, I was, I'm just really relieved to see a very clear gra- you know, graduated process of, of levels of, of, of appeal to go through. Because I, I mean, if I were one of the staff people that was around when it was not clear, I, I would be relieved to see that. So thank you for putting that in there.
Okay, other comments, observations, additions? Okay, so I think um if I'm hearing it correctly, that uh there's one that minor change from, from five months to six months that Betsy flagged. Um, but other than that, it doesn't sound like there are any substantive revisions that anybody is requesting. So if that is indeed the case, I think we can go ahead and ask for a motion to adopt or approve and adopt the personnel policy as it appears with that one amendment, Betsy, that you flagged.
Hi.
Sorry, go ahead, yeah.
I had two quick minor just questions out of curiosity that I, I looked and I couldn't find, and I don't know that it matters. With the jury duty, do, does it matter how many days are paid? Or like, you know how they ask you when you go to jury duty, how many days are covered? Does it matter? Does that need to be in there anywhere? Or is it in there anywhere? I just, I may have missed it. And then the other question was um something that's come up just recently with regard to telework. Um, I know that it states in there in the policy that um like it's, it's not a substitute for childcare or something like that. Should that uh also be the case, like if someone, or are they allowed, if they're sick, to still work from home, like as a telework? Or do they need to just take the day off? Those are just two questions that I had.
Nicole, do you want to take those or no?
Yeah, so there is a section on jury duty pay. It's um part of the paid leave, section nine, I think it's page one twenty-four. It discusses jury duty leave. It is a paid leave um for the duration of your service. Um, and then the telework question, the provisions are different right now. Um, due to COVID nineteen, there is um a COVID Family Leave Act that does kind of cover people who, who aren't unable to find childcare and who can still telework for that reason. Um, so we do kind of take that as a case-by-case basis for the time being.
But if someone were to be ill and home, then they wouldn't work, they would take sick leave. Yes.
Katie, before you move forward with that motion.
Sure.
Question about the agenda, which is that it says that this is an information item, it doesn't say that it's an action item. So can we, can we vote on this tonight?
Yeah, I think there was some confusion about that. Let me look at the report.
Mine says, sorry, the agenda says action.
Did, was there a new version of the agenda that I didn't print? Because I'm, I'm looking at the agenda that came with the original.
Um, amended one sent out.
Yeah, we did release an amended one. I don't know, you know what, Betsy, I didn't print that first one, so that one may say information.
It does.
Does it? Okay, got it. Yeah, the amended one that's posted says action.
Okay, my bad.
No, 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 not at all.
What are we going to do with nobody to catch all of this stuff going forward?
I'll come to every meeting, I'll sit through it all. I'll be public comment on every agenda item.
Perfect, perfect. Poor Rushmore is going to be deputized. We're like, sorry, this is the responsibility of that seat. So we don't make the rules, can't do it. Um, yeah, so we can, we can indeed go ahead and vote on this. But I guess my question is, we can, we can do one of two things. We can go ahead and uh move to approve the personnel policies as they appear here with the amendments that Betsy noted on that five versus six-month issue. Or we can ask that they come back in December for a subsequent review and vote at that point. So I would at this time open the floor to entertain either motion, either to go ahead and approve them or to ask that they come back in December.
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion to approve as amended by Betsy.
Okay, do I hear a second?
No, second then.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to go ahead and approve the personnel policies as they appear with the one amendment noted earlier. So any further discussion or commentary on this item before we move to a vote? Okay, hearing that, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And it's an aye vote for me as well. So that is approved. Congratulations, team of, of stout-hearted people who spend so many months doing this. All right, um. Okay, that brings us to item eight B, District Director Compensation. No reports on this in your agenda package, but I think to briefly summarize why this item is on here. So um obviously tonight during our closed session, we had our annual evaluation of the District Director. Um, as I reported out of closed session, a very positive and constructive conversation with her. So I think uh, you know, should we decide to proceed with any adjustments and compensation that has been agendized for this evening, it doesn't necessarily mean that we need to proceed forward with it. Um, but I would at this time open up the floor for discussion. And I think, oh, sorry, go ahead, Terry.
Well, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, what would the discussion entail right now, then?
So I think the, the question on the table tonight is um, as a result of the evaluation process that we conducted earlier, would the board like to move ahead with an adjustment in the director's compensation? Or would we like to request more information? Or would we like to take no action? I think those are really the three options that we have in front of us. And so that's a, I think it's a pretty um, it's an open-ended question, right? There's not any suggested action that's sort of being put before us, um, but it is, I think, an open conversation. But it is, I think, an open conversation at this point that we can have as to what we'd like to do in terms of next steps.
Katie, would you like me to clarify?
Sure, go ahead, Natalia.
Okay, if this makes sense to everyone. So in closed session, one of the things that you all can do, of course, is make discussion and, and things of that matter. But when it comes to the compensation, if you guys were to have come to a discussion or decision on if you were going to, you know, raise compensation, lower compensation, whatever that is, that has to be done in a public forum. So we put it on the agenda just in case you guys came out of public, I'm a public, woo, closed session. It's late, guys. Just in case you guys came out of closed session with any action for that. But if you do not, you can just not take action on the item. But if you did, I was not there, but if you guys did have a decision that you made about compensation, you can do that at this time. I hope that provided some clarification.
Can I?
Go ahead, Betsy.
I, I feel like we, we, well, let me start by saying I think we would like to adjust Nikki's compensation. I think we are agreed on that. I think we're not clear or we're not clear on the process and to the degree that I should have figured that out better than I did, I apologize. It sounds like maybe, maybe a technical problem we had is that we didn't say in the closed session agenda item that we were gonna talk about compensation. All we said was that we were gonna talk about the evaluation. Personally, I mean, you know, my term is ending, so if whatever happens after tonight won't involve me, I, I would think it would make more sense to have the discussion about compensation happen in a closed session. And I wish we could have done it that way, but because it didn't say that on our agenda, it seemed like we thought we couldn't. And, and my understanding from just honestly asking my husband, who has a lot of Brown Act experience, that, that what you need to announce in an open meeting is, is the actual compensation that you decide on. I'm not, I'm not sure that the discussion about how we decide to come to an agreement about compensation needs to happen in an open session and.
All right, I'm sorry, the discussion doesn't need to happen in open session, but the, like you said,
The decision.
Decision needs to happen in open session.
Yeah, that is, yeah. So I mean, I guess to me, the question is now, do, do we, do we feel comfortable as a group having an open discussion about compensation now and making a decision now? Or should you, or should you agendize another closed session in December, maybe? And include the word, you know, compensation discussion in a closed session agenda item in order to feel like we have the leeway or you have the leeway to have that discussion then, and then bring the decision out into the, into the open session? If that makes sense.
It, it does make sense. So what I think, you know, I, I would find myself largely in agreement with that recommendation. I think probably the smartest course of action to make sure that it's agendized correctly and that there's just no question around any of the deliberative process is to agendize a brief closed session for the purposes of discussing, you know, adjustments and compensation for the beginning of the December regular meeting and then bring this action item back on the December agenda. And I think we could also do with a little bit more documentation in terms of where we are with regards to the step system and maybe a refresher from our class and comp study or, you know, from the last time we looked at salary ranges and compensation tables and all that information. I think that that would be helpful in having a more informed discussion. And so I think we could, we could request some of that information in advance of our December meeting as well.
Okay, so I'll work with Natalia to make sure that we're agendizing it properly, getting you guys the information you need, and we'll get it on the December agenda.
Well, let's, 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 let's take a vote on that. I mean, that's what, that's what I think. That's, that's my opinion. But let's, let's have a little conversation about it. I mean, we can, we can do that or we can, we can move forward or we can just drop it. I mean, it's, like I said, the way it's agendized allows for any of those choices, but I, I would recommend that we basically table it and bring it back for December.
I would agree with that. And do we need to make a motion to vote on that?
We just need to move to table it.
Yep, I moved to table it until the December closed session meeting.
Okay, perfect. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to table item 8B for the December meeting pending differently agendized closed session and a little bit more documentation. Any further discussion or commentary on that item before we move to a vote?
What about the, what about the documentation, Katie? Is that something you'll ask for to have in the packet?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, or, or provide it to the board in closed session, depending on what the, what the rules are surrounding the publication of that.
I'd be interested in seeing would be the, the, the top line step system for, you know what I mean? Opening and there's a closing, but there's nothing in between. It'd be nice if that was worked out.
Yep, absolutely agree. Okay. Then let's go ahead and move to a roll call vote on that one. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Khan. Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me. So we'll table that item and we'll bring it back in December. And just a reminder, of course, to the board that we can always, if we do vote to make any change in compensation, we can always make that retroactive to today's date without any problem. Okay, um, item 8C is our Holidays Enclosures calendar, which appears on page 191 of your packet. So we're looking for a motion to approve that. Nikki, is there anything we need to know about that? It's pretty straightforward. It's just a bit of annual business that we do. We moved it from December because December is gonna be a long meeting as well.
Yeah, the, I'm trying to get to that page. There were no real major changes from last year. We did keep Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day as a professional development day on October 11th. The, the one thing we did change was the flexible holiday, which usually comes right around Christmas. We moved to New Year's Eve just because of the way the weeks fell. But other than that, I think it's pretty much standard.
Okay. Any question or discussion on this one? All right, then we'd just be looking for a motion to approve the 2021 Holidays Enclosures list.
I move we approve that calendar.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion or comment on this item? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And an aye vote for me, so that's approved. We're blowing through it, guys. We're, we're coming into the home stretch. All right, here we go. So we've got an RFP for Janitorial Services from page 192 in your pocket. Nikki, do you want to give us a very brief summary of why we need this RFP?
Yes, so currently, as you know, Jonathan is our facilities manager and we have two facilities maintenance staff that work in which are Gerardo and Ricardo. We just found as time has gone on that, like, there's just not enough of them to be able to do preventative maintenance, maintain all of the landscaping and gardening, cleaning, just, you know, everything on top of everything. And when you think about COVID, we've had to like increase the amount of cleaning and sanitization and other things like that. So I had a conversation with Jonathan as well as the management team and we think the best course of action is to bring in a cleaning crew three days a week to the main library just to help support keeping the building clean, especially as we move into potentially opening again. It's just not really sustainable the way that we currently have things set up. So we did some research and we put together this RFP that identifies all of the services that we're looking to just basically supplement the work that Jonathan and his staff are doing. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Jonathan's on the call as well. Natalia did a lot of the research as well. So we should be able to hopefully answer any questions you might have.
Any questions on the RFP?
Do we have any sense of what we think the numbers might come in on this as far as cost?
I do not. Jonathan, do you have a, a guesstimate or no?
I, a guesstimate could be, there were some rough numbers earlier in the beginning of COVID and their numbers were kind of high, but I, I could say, but maybe $2,500. But that was a full deep cleaning, but that was just for, but that was that over time. Some people I hear anywhere between $200 to $700 a week. That's, that's my, just a rough, just a very rough estimate.
And we, am I correct in, in believing that's not an expense we currently have budgeted or are we moving something? We would have to, I mean, is that currently imagined in the facilities budget or would we need to?
I do think, yeah, I think at the mid-year, we'd have to make some adjustments. But especially when we're looking at what we set aside for capital improvements as well as some of the other money that was put aside. Jonathan, you know, being that Measure Z passed, that isn't gonna be touched. You know, as we approach building projects, there's certain things that we're not going to spend money. So I, I do think we'll just need to make some adjustments at mid-year to account for it.
Yeah, I think you've got like $70,000 in that capital. That's how much money's been spent. So we've got plenty of money to do that. And the price Jonathan that you're quoting is pretty good. Asking to come clean my house too, that's, that's a good price.
I just ask, because I'm just trying to recollect where, where all of our staff is at. The two facility staff, are they both full-time now?
Uh, one of them works 40 hours a week. He was bumped up from where he previously had been. And then Ricardo works 25 hours a week for us right now.
And have we, have we looked at that as a possible option to?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I know a lot of what Ricardo does for Jonathan and Jonathan, if you want to speak to this, he's not so much the cleaning side of things. He does a lot more in terms of outdoor, like the landscaping and other things like that. So it really, even if we increased his hours, I don't think that's what Jonathan has him working.
He, he basically does maintains the, the landscape. He will help when, when it comes to some cleaning, but his expertise is, is basically, he does, he's helped a lot of our irrigation system and making sure that our landscape is, is the best as possible. Gerardo has done that also. So they, they sometimes cross, you know, go back and forth between, you know, jobs. But we have, since I've been here, the, the main objective for Ricardo has been maintenance. I mean, that's been landscaping.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion on this RFP? Okay, then if there is no further discussion, I think we can move to a vote. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the RFP for facilities and janitorial services as it appears in the packet. Okay, do I hear a second? All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion or comment on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me as well. Okay, perfect. So that's approved. Our final action, oh, excuse me, our final information item is our 2021 Pay Period Calendar and Board Meeting Date Calendar, which you will find on pages 226 and 227 of your package. Nikki, anything on this?
No, um, as you can see, I think it was at the beginning of this calendar year that we moved to a, a Sunday through the following Saturday pay period schedule. So nothing crazy. This is just what it's gonna look like moving forward with the payroll. And then the Board of Library Trustees meetings, we did double check to make sure none of them fall on a holiday of any kind this coming year. So the only one that we did need to move was December because Memorial Day falls on the fifth Sat, fifth Monday, so we, we can meet on our regular fourth Monday in May, which is nice because it doesn't move up deadlines for everybody. But the only other one, the one that we did switch was December 20th. So just pretty standard. So just again, just informational for the board.
Fourth March, sorry, I'm just looking at the calendar. Okay, got it. So there's still almost a full four weeks between the November and December meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, that's nice. Yeah. Um, this is an informational item, so no, no action is required, but any feedback or comments or the issues that, that you guys see? This is an important one because once we basically agree that this is what it's gonna be, then those are our regular meeting dates and moving those around is always a little bit of a pain. So. Okay, very cool. No correspondence in the package this month that I'm aware of. And in terms of future agenda items, we have a packed calendar for December. We'll resume with our closed session compensation conversation at the beginning. You'll recall that in December, we also do all of our election of officers liaison appointments. We'll be welcoming our, and sort of officially swearing in our newly elected slash appointed board members. We'll have a whole bunch of stuff to do relative to the CFD. There's a whole bunch of documentation that will need to happen in December. And just as a preview, it's basically stuff saying like, hey, this is how the vote came out and we have a resolution agreeing that that's what happened and we're gonna do the CFD. So it's sort of the, if you remember all the stuff we did at the beginning to initiate that process, it's the kind of closed parentheses of that process. In looking at some of those resolutions, no major, you know, huge decision-making that comes up in December, but just a lot of sort of formalizing of the process. So any other agenda items that anybody would like to add for December at this time? Of course, you can always just let me or Nikki know and we can make sure it's on there.
I think, I think you already mentioned it, Katie, but I don't know how to even word it. I think it's gonna have to be a discussion point, but some kind of subcommittee among the board, unless it's just gonna all go through however we agendize CFD-specific stuff, but.
Right, 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 yeah.
Securities committee that we did before.
Yeah, I've talked with Nikki and Natalia about this a little bit. And I think what will probably make the most sense is to establish another standing committee, sort of similar to the budget committee, so that there is a public record piece of it. Since it's such an important kind of component of district finances, it seems logical and fair to make sure that it's, it's public record in that way. Yeah, absolutely. We'll have to do a lot of committee reshuffling and rearranging and dissolving and reforming. So yeah, lots of, lots of that.
Yeah, that was my thought as well, because I know the ad hoc committees can't go on in perpetuity. And I think
This one.
They're not gonna go on in perpetuity, but they're certainly gonna last quite a while.
That's right, that's right. And there's a, there's a reporting and a transparency mechanism built in there that I think is important as well for lots of reasons. So yeah, certainly, I think we'll have a good discussion around that. Anything else that anybody would like to flag at this point for the December meeting? Okay, then if there's nothing else, I think we are at the end of our time. And so thank you once again to Trustee Khan. We'll miss you next month, but thank you, of course, for your, for your dedicated service. All right, and this was a good one to go out on because it was a, it was a marathon. So bravo. All right, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
How about if I move that?
How about? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any, any opposed, any objection? You're out. Okay, hearing none, we are adjourned at 8:30 PM.
Thank you, Betsy.
Bye, everybody. Good luck. Good luck to you. Bye, everybody. Good luck, good luck to you.